Creating a dark area, creating a visual barrier to the pest between the Fitzgerald lot and some of the more entertainment districts to the end. It was empty and it was dark. Now there's light, there's activity at night. It creates an ambiance and certainly expands the entertainment district there. And what we find is ourselves caught in one of the unexpected turn of events of the Simsbury Center Zone. When the Simsbury Center Zone was adopted, it had a provision for alternative compliance, but alternative compliance does not apply to signs. That was specifically kept out of there. So the only option to obtain a freestanding sign is to obtain its own change. And there's been a series of meetings and progression over the course of time, various town officials. And after a meeting in February, the idea of applying for a zone change seemed to be the most likely and efficient way to go, although it's much more difficult, more expensive. The fee itself is nearly $700 to apply for a zone change. We have a property that has been under use, certainly as an entertainment area. It is in a sea of asphalt. There's asphalt on three quarters of the building. And the idea is to keep it vibrant, to attract people, to maintain the presence during the day, so that people think of the Redstone Pub at night. The sign would of course list all the tenants that are there. And frankly, the zone change seemed to be the only way to accomplish the purpose of obtaining a freestanding sign. Yesterday, we received, the town received some comments from Code Studio concerning the application. And they were thinking that the zone change would require another vision session and a whole process of evaluation similar to what was done with the initial code. That seems to be an off-the-large undertaking in trying to spur and develop use of downtown in the interest of making it a more livable, sustainable area. As Design Review Board said last year, it was sympathetic to Mr. LeBeck's express need for a freestanding sign. The Code Studio says, "We're not unsympathetic to a free sign." And allowing a freestanding sign to support tenants in these key buildings may make good sense for the town. This particular building is listed as a building to be protected on the front page of the Regulating Plan for the Center Zone. Ultimately, it is just a sign, but we've gotten ourselves in a bind because in order to obtain this board, what Code Studio, what others think is not a bad idea, a sign that is consistent with the community design standards, we need to take this long about route through a zone change. And so that is the purpose for it. That is why we're here to seek the approval of Design Review Board, as it gave last year, simply subject to the idea that it was not something you could consider because it was incompatible with a zone classification. If there are any questions, Mr. LeBeck and I are happy to answer them.
Maybe in just a nutshell, what is your most compelling argument to make a zone change? It's quite drastic. I mean, the whole issue about developing a form-based code, of course, is for predictability down the line. You really have to look at, I think, projects in town center 40 years out. How's it going to get built out? And I think the issue is, because what is there now is going to be quite different at some point in the future. And I think the issues around the charrette and around the idea of the form-based code was to envision how that build-out is going to happen and encourage it to go in a particular way. I think that was what probably generated the discussions around signage, why a freestanding sign on Hop Meadow Street would be appropriate, but inappropriate on an SC2 or SC3 zone area. So with that, because a zone change impacts more than just can I have a sign or not a sign, it's going to impact, if you were to change more away, for example, to an SC1 zone, then it impacts the transparency on the building, it impacts the roof pitches, it impacts the setbacks, it impacts a lot of things on other properties. And so the issue is, the complexity of a zone change is the long-term disadvantage vis-à-vis the charrette and the form-based code, and that it would be inconsistent with that visioning process. And I think that's probably why Lee Einswalter recommended a revisiting the visioning process, if that's really a legitimate way. I wonder, because it's not that you're being denied, or Mr. LeBeck is being denied a sign, it's a wall sign versus a freestanding sign is the issue, I guess. And we'll get to the sign that was submitted as part of the package, but as I understand it, this particular meeting is only to discuss the zoning change issue, it's not about the sign?
That's right. And, you know, we've got ourselves, I think, in an unfortunate box that, you know, maybe it looks like an elephant gun is going after a mouse, but it is where we find ourselves as a result of the strictures that we've created. And it makes sense in some regards. When you look at Wilcox Street, Prestation Street, you probably don't want those freestanding signs. You want to have the walkability up and down those streets. But picture, if you will, Mallway, which is entirely different. There aren't other stores to go back and forth to. There's nothing but parking lots all across. And yes, we may see development on Mallway within 40 years, within the visioning process. The question is, how do you get from here to there? If you don't support retail development in this one, the only business area on the street now, if you don't allow that area to be vital and to develop and to enhance the surroundings and become more than it has been for decades, then you have to allow some support for the retail there. Because if retail fails there, you may never get to the 40-year vision of having something in what is now just the open parking lot behind cannons and on the side of CVS. If you look at it, the question is, the retailers today have to make decisions and have to operate in today's environment. All there is is asphalt. It's nice to envision the things in the future, but if you don't get these retailers, if you don't get these businesses to, three, five, 10 years from now, staying there and developing something that will inspire someone to do the development that has not been done. Vision, no vision, charrette, no charrette. There's always been the opportunity for a creative developer to develop Mallway, to come in and fill up some of that. And they could have come in and applied and gone through the process, but nobody has ever done it. And that street has remained a retail desert. At night, it has been a barren sea of asphalt. If you want to get to the vision, you have to support the businesses. And Mr. LeBeck says a freestanding sign is something that will catch people's attention. During the day, it will establish a visible identity so that they'll come to the facility afterwards. And perhaps if he's successful, maybe there's another one that goes in there. And if he's very successful, maybe you start to see some of the development that is envisioned. But the question is, how do you get from here to there? You have a retailer who's invested time, money, a lot of effort, try and make this business work. He's pursued this for 15 months because he thinks it is mission-critical to the success of this business. If you want to redevelop a charming, historic piece of property that exists today, then we need to find a way to give that support. And the complications of the Center's Town Center Zone have put us in the box where we have to come to this for its own. Yes, there's a lot of visioning that needs to be done, but if you don't have the support of those that have committed today, you don't get to tomorrow.
Yeah, I was just trying to make that connection or understand the difference between a wall on a sign, a freestanding sign a couple of feet away, making all the difference that you're proposing here.
It, you know, it's
A zone change is a pretty high bar to achieve. And there are alternatives, I think you probably know what they are, but
Well, we've explored a number of those alternatives, none of which, you know, it's not as simple as going to get a variance, because then you have to show a great degree of prejudice. How do you prove that? The text amendment, no one's ever suggested the text amendment before yesterday, in all of this dialogue and hallway here and so forth. So we have to go with what's available to us. And the zone change, for better or for worse, is really kind of the only possibility that there is for this. And when you look at that area, and you look what's around it, all the other properties front on Hop Meadow, except for this one, you know, you have just a different situation. And the visioning is necessarily different than Wilcox or Prestation.
Maybe I could just ask Hiron, if you would just kind of outline, I'd like to open this up before a wider discussion, but maybe Hiron can just kind of sketch out the, from the staff.
Can I make a demonstration for you to answer your question?
Well, I'd like to, to portage it out. Thank you for that, Hiron.
I think that you all probably got as part of your package too, a copy of the overall graphic sort of plan of the property, just to, I think you got my views today, right?
Why didn't
Just to, just so you have a pretty good idea of the buildings you're located. I would actually just take the one that's just below that, that doesn't copy well, so I use that top one. I think as the chairman said, the zone change is a high bar. There's no question about that. One of the reasons that the process for developing this code in the town center was so intense is that tremendous amount of forethought went into what the town would look like at its ultimate build-out. The way the staff sees this particular proposal is that there are a number of different alternatives that could achieve the same goal. But one, of course, one of the alternatives that ultimately the zoning commission has is not to accept the change. That's certainly one alternative. It's always an alternative. The second is, as the chairman just pointed out, is an attached sign to the building. This is a bit of a unique shaped structure. It is a keeper building. It's shown on the Regulating Plan as a keeper building. So there's no proposed change in the footprint of that building. Ultimately, whether somebody decided to keep it or not is certainly an open question, but right now, the plan is to try to keep that building and to try to enhance it and its uses and vitality in that area. So the way this zone was set up, the way SC3 was set up, is that attached signs were allowed to be put on the building. It could be a projecting sign, which essentially would be the same, serving the same exact purpose as a freestanding sign in the yard. It could be attached to the building and projecting sign could be attached to the building. So the exact same outcome could be achieved. My assumption is, and it doesn't really say in the application, but my assumption is that the overall need for this sign is due to visibility, that no one can find the building or has difficulty in locating the building. And I'm sure that many of you already know, but just for the record, the sign on the corner that exists at the corner of Hop Meadow and Mallway is already an existing off-premise sign that currently serves a number of the offices that are in this building. Certainly one of those is the Redstone Pub. There are a couple of others that are listed on the signs below that, but that's an off-premise existing sign with an arrow that points toward that building. So about 180 feet away is this particular building. And again, the attached sign could serve as a clear identification as to where that building is located and where that business is located. That attached sign, proper-sized attached sign, would not need a variance. It doesn't need a publicating. It is an application that complies with the regulations. So that would be alternative two, in my opinion. I think as Lee Einswalter pointed out in his memo that he sent yesterday, there are certainly possibilities for modifying this proposal specifically with regard to keeping in mind that this is for a keeper building. The keeper building is a historic structure. The town wants to encourage them, wants to certainly encourage the economic vitality. And the possibility that Lee suggests is that the text could be amended to allow for one freestanding sign, that is, if the board decides it wanted to do a freestanding sign, that were certainly about half the size of the one that was shown in the application, because the one that's in the application is twice as large as any freestanding sign that's allowed under the current regulations, even under SC1. It also would be possible to have in front of an existing keeper building. So the text could be quite narrow. So limiting the application of that would indicate that there are probably a couple of other buildings in the town center where this might apply, but certainly not street upon street upon street. Whereas if the zone change is accepted, and the rationale for that needs to be very, very clear and very concise, could apply to several other streets in the town center zone. And so the applicability of it going forward is significantly different than just a simply a small text change. Again, and the last thing I would say is that the zone change is the most drastic measure that is possible in this particular case. And staff has said in my memo, doesn't recommend that. There are a number of alternatives that could work just fine, in my opinion.
Thank you. I'd like to open it up for our discussion then, believe. Rick, you have anything else?
Yeah, I certainly agree with the comments that Hiron has made. And I think this certainly, certainly we want to support the business that's there and see them flourish and encourage. But I think in this case, the concept of doing that via a zone change is too radical. And it sounds, it sounds like, to me, that there are alternatives that do not involve the zone change, that can be pursued. I know that must be a frustration about the time that's been absorbed already in trying to pursue these things, but I think it would be a mistake for us to support the zone change, at the same time that we do desire to find an alternative that comes close to meeting the applicant's desires. Certainly the wall sign, the fact that there is a sign out on Hop Meadow Street identifying the business and directing it to this location, I think is an asset that should be appreciated, that not everybody gets that kind of, that kind of special treatment. So with the combination of the street sign that's out there on Hop Meadow Street plus a good wall-mounted sign, which is permitted, it seems to me to be the right answer.
Chairman?
John.
Excuse me. This is, to me, a code issue. And when we went to work way back, the beginning of creating the Center Zone, the criteria for design, we, I think, it's fair to say that we all recognized that we would come up against a situation such as presented tonight, where the code as written does not recognize a situation for a particular building or a particular business. I think that what we ought to be looking at here, the zoning commission ought to be looking at here, clearly is language that by criteria such as a keeper building as criteria for allowing signage that would not otherwise be allowed, or some, I'm not going to write the code, what I'm saying is, rather than change the zone, let's put language in the code that recognizes the problem and the opportunity for the boards to solve the problem. In the meantime, perhaps the zoning commission would in some fashion agree to a temporary situation of signage, or the applicant would agree that, well, if this is really underway and we're really going to do this, then we'll agree that signage on the building at this point is only temporary. We'd prefer to have a freestanding sign. It's not, at this point, there's no application for signs up to this board. So it's not a design issue. It's a code and language issue that I think we can comment on, but beyond that, it's
Well, except that this board is charged with interpretation of the code and making recommendations of the zoning commission. The code is the code. I think that we do want to follow that in terms of the language. What you're suggesting is the best avenue might be through a text amendment. And I think that's what we do.
Way to go, Tony. Yeah. I just have a hard time with this. The difference between a freestanding sign and a sign on the building, even one sign on the building that projects out. And I'm looking at this, and says, what the, what's the difference? You know, it's a sign on the building projecting out. It just happens to be one of the ends of it hooked to the building rather than two postouts. What's the difference? And you have already directed people down Mallway. They go down Mallway, there's this sign on the building projecting out. This is just where the Redstone Pub is. And so I think we're making a mountain out of a molehill.
Well, the demonstration I wanted to make was an explanation, if I could, please. May I borrow your picket? That's Mallway, or this is Mallway right here, and that's Hop Meadow.
This is Dave Richmond's building.
Our building is not a street. It's set back. And if you put a sign on the wall here, nobody out there can see it, because Dave Richmond's building is in the way. Okay? So the whole idea is that there's a grass plot that borders the sidewalk, so that the sign would stand at the sidewalk, so that people from there can see it. Because if you put a sign on the building, by the way, it is a historic building, we do want to retain its character. And I think putting a freestanding sign on that wall that's big enough to be seen would be an error. You can't see that sign, because the building's in the way. Even though I've cleaned up all the trees and the landscaping, you can't see it. And that's why we're looking for a sign that stands out here versus one that stands back here. And that's
I haven't been down there recently to see what the conditions are at the building at the Odom and Surin. There's, there was a large sign, assume it's still there.
Yes, sir.
Big sign that says the courtyard.
Yes, sir.
Is not that a suitable location to also say
It is behind a very nice tree.
So take the tree down.
There just aren't that many trees in that neck of the woods. As I said, it's all, it's all asphalt. And that's, that's the lone tree on Mallway. So tearing it down for a sign didn't seem appropriate. Let me just mention something, if I could, about
We took other trees down.
No, we can plant new trees.
Well, they
Oh, you'll pick up the asphalt.
It's not all our asphalt. But, you know, when you talk about the text and, and, you know, what's the, what's the least impactful way of addressing the sign? Well, if we could have just come in on a sign application, that would have been it, but that's outside, as this board found last year. Well, then you say, well, let's do a text amendment. Well, the text amendment then requires the applicant to identify everything within the zone that could conceivably be changed because of the text amendment, and try and fight multiple zoning issues as to how that would impact. So instead of our having to stand here and justify a freestanding sign in front of the Redstone Pub, we may have a dozen other locations that we would have to address because the text amendment would impact that. So in terms of looking for a narrow scope, even though a zone change is ordinarily, you know, a heavy-handed way to go, in this instance, it's the only way to address this piece of property on this street that hasn't had any development for a long time and is starting to nurture that now. And so, yes, in the, in the theoretical scale of greater land use intrusions, this has the least impact on the Regulating Plan. Because once we start to tinker with those text amendments, we've got to give much broader consideration to many other sites to decide how that would impact.
Right. I think that, just on that particular issue, just on that particular issue, your charge would not be to demonstrate throughout the town center that this is an appropriate way to have a text amendment. You're talking about this one particular site, and the advantage you have is that this is a protected building off Hop Meadow Street. There aren't that many protected buildings off Hop Meadow Street. So I think your avenues are a little bit easier than you may, than I think you just stated, but
There may be, how many? But there may be, how many, I don't know, protected buildings, a dozen?
A couple.
Two.
Two. Yeah, not very many.
The other two rail stations.
I think it is an avenue that's, that's certainly, if you're looking for flexibility in the zoning, that certainly would be a legitimate way to go and take a look at that, then put it up to the zoning commission to make that decision, well, is this a departure that they think they can live with in terms of going forward and rewriting the text for particular sites, one of which is your site? And I think, I think that's a legitimate way. Because you're really talking about a sign, the maximum size sign on a wall hung is about 10 square feet. A freestanding sign is 16 square feet. That's roughly two by three more. You know, you're not really talking about a huge difference there in terms of size, so I think that...
But you're talking about a 60% increase in size. I mean, 10 to 15, you know, it's a 60% increase. And, and this is the only way that we could design an application to target just this property, just this street, not tear trees down, a tree down, the only tree down.
Yeah. Rita?
I just want to comment that I think rezoning is, is, I think, an extreme situation for making people know that your property is back there. And I think we can argue with the importance, growing importance of social media. I'm not sure that a sign will be as significant as it is perhaps currently. And just to think of an example, I was just in Cambridge recently in Massachusetts and I was led down these side streets to a very, very popular place by my niece and believe me, they didn't have signs outside and nobody needed to meet that. They all knew because of social media. And I think that is going to be perhaps a less extreme route to take is to consider other options for...
Kevin?
Yeah, I agree with everyone here that the zone change is a big way to handle the project. That either the attached sign would make more sense as a starting point, because we don't really want your sign to be visible from Hot Metal Street down to the Mallway, to this 10 Mallway. That's not the intent of the signs. We're not, we don't need billboards in the center of town. All you're doing is location, and actually you already have three signs because you have the one at the corner and then two on the building already inside, the courtyard. And now you're talking about a fourth one out on 10 Mallway. So that's four signs for one business, that should be plenty. Because all you're trying to do is direct somebody coming in from Hot Metal Street to where you are in 10 Mallway and then into the, into the complex. So the one on the side of the building should be sufficient.
Though, not all those signs, it's hard to separate a sign, that the courtyard designation would become down, you know, as part of that.
But you have two, let's say Redstone Pub within the courtyard. You have the one that sticks out and then you have one on the wall.
Just one.
You have two.
Just one, sir.
As far as, as far as the pub, you have one on the wall and one sticking out. One next to the door.
One sticking out, that's it. We have an entrance, the sign that says entrance, that, that's not a, it's not a, it just says entrance.
It says, it doesn't, it says, doesn't say it's Redstone.
But your comment about social media is correct. We do a lot with that. The number one question we get through our social media sites is we can't find you.
Well, but that's so easy to solve when you, when you're using social media. I mean, yeah.
And if we were in Cambridge with the college students, most of it, I think that wouldn't be...
Well, but I think it's going to occur. I can hear more people becoming comfortable with that.
Tony?
Yeah, I just, I'm going back to old history. That area was a very vibrant part of the town at one time. There was a big firm at the back. My family used to go to a pet store, big pet store on one side. There's, all those shops were full, without one sign. People knew it was there. It went into sort of disrepair for a while, but at one time it was very vibrant and it didn't have a hell of a lot of signs pointing to it. People knew it was there. I know you're there. I haven't been there yet, but I know you're there. I keep saying I should go, but I don't think you need any more. You just don't.
I'd like to kind of draw us to a conclusion. I think we have consensus, great class, come here.
Well, I just was going to say, I was once a tenant in, in the courtyard, in fact, was there when we cut through the opening so that you could walk from Dracula Mall through to the bank and other places, so very familiar with that. This is a public confession. I was the author of the sign that says courtyard and at the same time, the one that's out on Hot Metal Street, Mallway, at that time was a private, was private property, was not a public street. So that's how we put a sign out there because it was private property. So that's, that's history. And I recognized at that time the difficulty of people identifying where it was. I thought that place, at the Odlum Building was the perfect place to put that. You see it, it's sized nicely and I just highly recommend that that be continued in use.
Well, I think, any final comments?
No, I'm saying all.
Okay.
It's true.
I think there's a consensus here in the board. I just like to see if someone would like to make that motion to... This issue again is not about the signage, but it's about making a recommendation to the zoning commission regarding a zone change from deferred SC two, I think, to SC one, two or three?
SC three to one.
SC three to SC one. Is the, is the issue at hand here? That's the recommendation we need to make to the zoning commission. John?
I guess I might give the motion here. Mr. Chairman, regarding the application of, application number 1322 of Mark Loebkin, agent for George, owner for zone change from SC three to SC one of the property located at 10 Mallway, I move that we make the recommendation to the zoning commission that the application be, I guess we deny it. Okay, we deny, in line of the fact that there are other less drastic alternatives available to that.
Okay, we have a motion. You have a second?
Second.
Tony, any other comments? All in favor, acknowledge by setting aye. Aye and aye, any opposed? Just as a design consideration, this board is, as has been stated, very sympathetic to the, to the matters of being identified prominently or sufficiently in downtown by a lot of businesses. I think the anticipation of looking forward up to 40 years, anticipating that road traffic, pedestrian traffic is going to become more and more part of the landscape there as the other side of the road gets built out in the future. But we think that the current provisions within the zoning regulations are certainly adequate for identification, which is our recommendation in terms of the sound review board. However, that said, I think the avenue of going with a text amendment certainly would be looked upon, I think. We would want to look on that again as, as a possible alternative here. I think that's something, because of the basis of the protected building site, the heritage going, that could be consistent with other buildings on Hot Metal Street. So that is an avenue that would be open for you to pursue. So thank you very much again.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the application of number 1324 of Anthony Pe, agent for franchise realty, Interstate Corporation, owner for a site plan amendment on the property located at 22 Mallway, Turnpike, West Limsbury, map eight twenty, block five zero three, lot zero zero two dash P, zone B three. We've got about a half hour. If you're going to get this, so I'm just giving you some advance notice, the planning commission is coming in at seven o'clock and we have a little other business to take here, but I think we can probably cover that.
We'll make it quick.
Thank you.
My name is Tony Proctor and you've been hearing how to... Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Does that work? Okay. With me, Jim McGarry, the owner of McDonald's, we're in McFarland with, she's a regional construction manager for the corporate office. The, the plan here is a remodel project for the existing site. It's a two and a half acre site, it's a 5,500 square foot building. There's 117 seats in the building. There's an outside patio area located right here. The site has, currently has 85 parking spaces. The drive-through area is a tandem, which means has two order points, but they're kind of back to back. You got to get through one before you get the other. The drive-through runs along the, the front side of the building. The proposed site revisions would be to put a dual drive-through in, that would be on this end of the building. What that does is creates two order points. The order points at McDonald's are the choke point. They're the kind of point that binds everything up. And McDonald's has found as the amount of sales at a particular site increases, that percentage of drive-through keeps increasing, it's at like 70% now. And what they're trying to do is get these folks on the site and off the site much quicker. Eliminates traffic congestion on site, it's better for McDonald's, it's better for the, for the customer. Couple other things that we'll be doing on site would be locating all of the handicap spaces in this area right here and making this all ADA compliant for access to the building. There's currently some handicap spaces that are, that are located over here. It's kind of a, a long walk for, for handicapped people. Revisions to the building would include, here we have some elevations here. The most distinctive renovation would be the removal of the, what we typically think of the typical McDonald's manser roof that's McDonald's, that's sort of dated for them. They want to upgrade the building, make it a little more modern. And what they will do is they'll cover the exterior with hardy plank siding, but what they also will do will be the brick areas, especially the large play place area that you see as you're coming down, the turnpike, that will remain as is. They're not going to change that, they're not going to change the gable roof lines, those roof pitches will remain as, as they are. The drive-through window actually will get moved in the building from, it's currently right here, it gets moved down. Again, that's part of just McDonald's process for making the, the drive-through line as efficient as possible. They've done studies on what those distances should be as far as how many people you get between the order point and all that stuff. The interior of the building would be, there would be some minor renovations going in there just to catch the building up to ADA compliance, some, a couple walls in the men's restroom. There's a restroom in the, in the play place that needs to be redone to bring it into ADA compliance. And that's, that's about the extent of it. We'd be happy to answer any questions you have. It is, it would be a special permit, a special exception. Just a site plan review, yeah. So we'd be going to the commission next week with your approval and we'd be happy to work through it or answer any questions we may have.
You're going, you're going to the zoning commission next?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
I just have one question on the driveway. Are you moving the driveway? It looked like it was in a different place on the joints.
Just highlight the changes on the drive.
These accesses will not change at all. This access will not change at all. No, it'll be, these will all be in the exact same place.
Okay.
In and out, off the site will be the exact same. It's just like it is now, where folks come in here, we'll be directed around the building. This flow and this flow will all be the same way.
You're just creating another lane for...
We're just creating another lane and there is a bypass lane. We did meet with the fire chief. We wanted to make sure that his trucks could get around there and folks running the drive-through, as well as McDonald's delivery trucks could get around and folks running the drive-through there, so.
And just highlight, if I were to come in from the left, so from Kim going there, and I want to go through the drive-through and then go back out the same way, how would I...
You have to, you would have to go in here, you go the whole way around the building, you hit the drive-through right here, you split, and then you do have to go around the building.
So you do a couple things.
Which basically what you do now, unless you sneak in.
So there's two railings being added, is that right?
There's, there's going to be one island added here and a small island added right here.
That, that last one is made of, is just, is what?
It's a curb.
It's concrete curb. It's not very wide.
To stop a conflict point occurring.
What is, what is the construction?
Trying to, yeah, it is, it is, it is, we're trying to minimize the curbing, but get enough in there to sort of keep folks from trying to cut in line here because we know how people trying to get their coffee.
Would you be, would you be supplementing the directional signage at all?
The whole lot will get restripped to try and help people and we probably will add a sign at that entrance saying drive-through with an arrow to the right.
And the, yes, the pavement markings would also be.
Yeah.
So after the dual order points, they, they merge again to the, to the same window? Is that how it works?
There's a camera system, it's very efficient. It will basically put them into the right location based on the color of the car and then when you go to the point to page, the person at the window looks at your car, there's two order choices, you pay from the order base on your car.
Why don't we, going to break this into two bases, maybe a site, we'll talk about the site issues and then we'll talk about the architecture. I assume you want, you're looking for a decision on both.
Yes, please.
Change to the building and to the site. Do you have any comments about the...
No, I think it's, I think in both cases, I'll comment on both, both site and building. I think it's a nice improvement.
And since I use McDonald's, having all the handicap across the way is fine.
The, so I think the idea of having a dual is probably going to alleviate that...
The long line.
Standing line of traffic waiting as well.
You know, someone comes in and they've got like their soccer team with them and they will have a separate order. Everybody has to wait. This, this alleviates that, you know, the guy just getting coffee can keep going.
It's like when you go to the bank, you can pick the shorter line to go to, whereas now you're in the line, you're stuck in the line, even though we have two order points in there, so this should be...
Anybody have any concerns about that?
Just tell me just about the signage, the, have you added another ordering board and an overhead thing or something? There seem to be...
You mean currently?
Well, there's the big board that has the menu, right?
We have, right now, currently we have two boards.
There's two?
So we're, we're, it's called tandem right now. So you have two order points, but they're both in the same line. We just move you up, so you take an order here, order here, so...
The guy at front is slow than the guy at...
So we're not adding another order point.
The second order board will be gone? There'll only be one in the...
There'll be two menu boards, two order points, but instead of being one after each other, they'll be next to each other.
All right, so there's not two menu boards for each?
One menu board for each one.
Okay, all right, because I thought there was a, you know, a pre-menu board and then an ordering board.
There's a, there is a small pre-sell board, which is like a thin item that's sort of in your line, it tells you that there's two lanes and this thing's a...
But there's only two full...
The menu boards that are available, which is what they add.
You only use one?
Yeah.
Rita?
No, I just, the only other question I have was the McDonald's signs are the same as they are now in terms of...
On the building?
Yeah, on the building.
We're going to upgrade the one on the front of the building. We're trying to use LED signage on the exterior of the building now, so the McDonald's on the front of the building will get replaced, most likely the one on the side of the building will get replaced. The M that's hanging down on the gable, that's quite unique to Limsbury, that's not changing.
Yeah, these two, these, these will, you probably won't even see a difference on those two, those word marks.
They're, they're flat and they're LED, so you know, there's less maintenance problems as well. And that's the issue.
Just getting back to the site, so we can just wrap that up. Does anybody have any other questions?
No.
John? John, do you have?
That's two.
John, Kevin?
No.
Kevin? No, of course not.
I want to just kind of, the first time we approved this new building, we were a little overwhelmed when all the directionals came out because we didn't, there was way more than needed to be. It had McDonald's logo on every single side.
They're not changing.
And a lot more lighting, so, so go light with the internal signage.
Yeah, the, the site, the, the existing signage, the existing directional signage at the entrances, there's a clock sign right here, those are not changing at all, that all.
It's not like we're building a new site, it's an existing site, so the people, the local people know it.
Oh, it's a confusing site if you're not familiar with it.
Yes.
The other issue regarding lighting though is that I think they, they were asked to tone down the lighting initially because the intensity was quite overwhelming.
When it got built, it surprised us.
The, and I think that was changed and I think maybe much...
Yeah, we worked with Howard Beach on, we, I've changed out the lighting since I've been there, we worked through Howard Beach on it.
You're not changing that at this stage?
No.
Let's, let's just talk about the architecture then. Oh, just one final thing, that's, the, the outside island is, is a curb essentially and then the inner one is a landscaped island there?
That, this is, this is a, this is a landscape island, an island that will have, that will have grass or landscaping in it all. This island here, we, we have it shown with a couple plants in there, more than likely that that'll be a curved island, just because you can put plants in there, the chances of them actually... the chances of them actually surviving.
Uh, that's a, usually does a good job of landscaping, I'm assuming, that's. Well, let's talk about the architecture a little bit. Uh, my first observation is that the most visible part of this actually is what you see on the bottom there, that's the, uh, south elevation, uh, and that's by far the plainest, uh, thing to look at. Is there any concern about bringing a canopy or some of these over?
We try, our goal is to stay respectful to the original Simsbury design, it's pretty unique, it doesn't really look like any of our other McDonald's, but we're trying to get rid of the mansard piece of it. And the mansard does provide overhang. And so to replace that, you see that gray line that goes around the building, that is a small box trellis, it's about two and a half feet wide.
Oh, I see.
And it's, um, box shape and it offers some coverage when you're in the window, you're in the drive-through, you have your window down, and on the other side of the building offers some coverage as you're walking down the sidewalk.
So it is a detail that we're trying to.
Yeah, you can probably see on the elevation at the top right.
Oh, I see.
It's pretty small.
Right here.
And it's, it's flat, it's pretty inoffensive.
Yeah.
But it does, does offer, offer some depth to the building.
Yeah.
And we tried to bring the coating that's around the current peak roofs and we extended that around the building just to try and make it look pretty similar. Kind of fits a bit better now, I think, than it, in this iteration than it does right now, because right now the mansard roof looks out of place, I think.
Yeah.
Based on everything else, we probably really insisted on it at the time.
Yeah.
To McDonald's, it must have a mansard roof. Everything old is new again, right? And then we're gonna re-sheath the whole, um, building just to give it a new look. It currently has siding on it, it will get new siding, just to sharpen up, all the brick will stay.
Yeah, I think a lot of the McDonald's and how you can do ones are really, uh, substantial and pretty.
Yeah, the sharpening.
Really cool looking.
And those colors are a pretty accurate representation.
We have samples of us.
They're right there, Ron, a few. Yeah, and, and I brought these samples to show you, um, I would just, this, this color here is the base color. This is the base color for the majority of the building, this is the accent color that you go on the, the vestibule. Um, and the reason I brought these, 'cause that is a good question, trying to reproduce these colors on paper. I have some half size I brought if, if we wanted to show, and they're, they're even further from those colors, so.
Because the, the brick on the building is actually not as red as it looks on this elevation, it's kind of a, a blonder brick, it's not a really red-red brick.
I couldn't.
But it's hard to portray that on paper. So that's a product that doesn't need any maintenance, you know, that it's an integral color, it's a certainty product, it's pretty nice.
And what's the?
So which one's which?
It's just gonna be lap siding.
Lap siding.
The one you have in your hand, Harrage Clay, that's the base color.
Yeah.
Um, and the Savannah Wicker is the accent color for the, the hearth and the, the art.
It's very subtle, yeah.
Want purple or something?
No.
Okay, anybody have any questions on the architecture or detail?
Some improvement.
Yeah. Irum, do you have any staff?
No, who would've thought?
I'm gonna stay down.
I think, I think that they, they addressed the concerns, they didn't even staff, well, yeah, I think that they addressed it. I would say this for the record though, that from time to time, Howard does have to kind of chase after the signage, gets a little excited outside. So, and we'll continue to, to monitor that, you know, we get calls from other people that say, "We can't have that sign, why can't they have it?" So we need to chase around and do that. So, you know, just so the applicant knows, we'll continue to do that, but you just try to keep them under control and responsible.
As a corporation, we're trying to calm down on that signage too, but we can't be everywhere all the time.
Okay, good. All right, I think it is, uh, Kevin, you have?
I guess I'm gonna do. Uh, Mr. Chairman, regarding the application number thirteen twenty-four of Anthony.
Frakel.
PE of AI Engineering Inc., agent for Franchise Realty Interstate Corporation, owner for a site plan amendment for a property located at twenty-two Albany Turnpike, West Simsbury. I move that we make the following referral to the zoning commission that the design review board finds this application substantially consistent with the intent and principles of the guidelines for community design and recommends approval. And we'll refer to just a map stated, five thirteen thirteen.
We have a motion, we have a second by, uh, Rick Schonhardt. Any other comments? Do you have a motion to approve as presented? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Both united, it's, uh, good.
Thank you.
Good luck, good luck with the zoning commission.
We're gonna try to do the work in September.
Less than a half an hour. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, discussion items, uh, we have, uh, three items. First one is the Village District Study of Weetong, I, I, Irum, just give us an update, these are ongoing projects.
The consultant had one, uh, previous public meetings, sort of a design session, brainstorming session, I think we had that one, you know, and I think that, uh, they have come back with some suggestions and, uh, for the Village District, um, they have given those suggestions to myself, I think you will see them, I think Alan Raphael and the committee as well, we made some suggestions to them. They will be back again on June nineteenth and the next session will be at the program, the program room at the library, and so we would like as many people as possible to come and participate in that if you are available and can make it. I'm not sure right now what we're doing, it'll be at six or seven, but I'll let everyone know what time it is, try to make it as convenient as possible. We'd like to get as much input into this as possible. We really understand that it's not the entire town center, but we do think it's important that, that a lot of work has gone into things like the Ruten study, um, the, the Ruten Order Study actually had a lot of ideas about Weetong as well. We'd like to see how people think those fit into that study as well. So I know that some of the initial thoughts by the consultant, uh, were sort of interesting. I mean, every time there's public input, they get some sort of interesting ideas, whether they're all ultimately acceptable or not, they'll just have to, we can see. But we really would like to get as much public input into this as possible. So, June nineteenth at the library, uh, in the early evening, if you're available, that's what I have on my mind. There's plenty of opportunity for public input to that. The second one is the marketing study, uh, it's again, it's a town-wide marketing study, Fairweather Consulting is collecting data now, we've had, uh, one public session on that, was reasonably well-attended, although I would have liked to see more of the business people there as well. We've been collecting information and sending that to the consultant with regard to them sort of focusing in on strategic areas where they can be helpful to make the businesses in town more acceptable, sort of focusing on what Peter Fairweather called "the truth of the place", try to find out what exactly is the truth about this place. And we get to the truth, then we don't have any problem spreading that word. Some towns or some entities may decide that they, their marketing plan has, uh, wants to focus on something that may not be quite realistic and we're not interested in that. We're trying to get to the point where we can tell people what, what this place is about and why they should come here, why they should do business here, why they should recreate here and so on. So we're collecting that data now. As the data is collected and as the consultant collects and assembles that information, it's on the website, it's simsberrystrategy.com. So if you have any interest in looking at that information and updated information, simsberrystrategy.com is where that's all found. We're in the process now of setting up the next meeting date, next public meeting date, and Peter will let us know when he's ready to come back and do that. There probably is only gonna be one or two more meetings for both of these studies because they're both relatively short in terms of their timeframe. They're supposed to be done by the end of June, I think it'll probably go a little bit into July, but we'll be very close to finishing up in that timeframe.
Other, uh, just a question with that. Will, uh, will there be a discussion at all on growth, where it's supposed to happen, where it shouldn't happen, and how much as part of the study, or is it just what types of things?
I think it's really gonna be more trade than market. Good question, good question.
I think that's a critical thing.
He may have some suggestions for us too on that, too, absolutely, I mean, let's, let's plug that into the, into the process and ask him if he can do that. Now, he may say that that's in phase two of the study, I don't know.
We'll find out.
Phase two of the study was supposed to be the actual implementation phase. We're still scrouching around looking for money for that phase right now, so we'll see if we can, how much we can get done. I think it's an excellent question, I don't see why we couldn't ask any question. So, very interested, kind of interestingly, very interested in the, the whole Herman Drive area. He said there's really a, a lot of things up there that, that people either aren't aware of or haven't really focused on, and he said, you know, parts of Herman Drive are ten minutes from here, it's really not that far, and it's something that a lot of people either have sort of lost sight of or they're just not aware of, so he's kind of interested in that as well. So, we're putting him in touch with all the other, uh, relatively large, uh, employers in the area. People have ten or twelve people, fifteen people working for them, he wants to know about where they're located, who they are, what their interests are, what their problems and what their concerns are, so very aggressive about trying to get that information out there. And then the last one is the Hartford Land use study status. The committee had met and selected the top, um, top three or four consultants, uh, we met with the Hartford after that, and Hartford concurred with the select, the committee's selections. Those consultants, the three consultants actually have been notified and, uh, we're trying to set up the interviews for July second. I think that's, we don't know exactly, uh, I think what time yet, 'cause I'm trying to work through the Hartford, we may have to do some of this through video conferencing, and Hartford is, uh, is considering letting us use that facility for that, that purpose. We hope that shortly thereafter, within a day or two after the Fourth of July weekend, we're ready to go to contract with a selected consultant at that point. Feel very excited about that as well. We think that the Hartford again is still very anxious to, uh, participate in the process. Their realtor that they've selected is interested in participating in this process as well. We wanna plug as much economics and real-world, um, numbers into this as well, to make sure that, that what we do come up with is a, is a realistic solution for everybody, as well as a solution that the townspeople can provide you too. So we're excited about this process, we need to have that wrapped up probably by the end of September, that's, uh, gonna be, not gonna drag much, because that's the, the date we've given the Hartford and we're interested in getting that finished up as quickly as possible as well. So, so that's where we are, busy time, no question.
Have you made the names public?
Not yet, no, probably will by the end of the week, certainly will. And, and just, and that's just in fairness to the people that didn't get selected, I'm certainly happy to do that, but, but, yeah, I'd like to do that, just a day or two.
Yeah, I hope that, uh, I hope more people on the committee attend, maybe.
Yeah.
Is there a way you can?
Well, I'm certainly let everybody know.
Yeah.
You know, I, I think frankly it's a really important piece of property, it's very important, and I think that the potential for it is, is very important as well. I have to tell you, you know, after seeing what the town can do in terms of turnout with the Town Center Shred, and we let people know about what's going on as, as many as possible, I have to believe that the people that are interested show up, and so we will just continue to do the right thing, as long as we get a consensus, move forward. It's not that we're trying to keep anything secret certainly, but we really want people to show up and participate in the process as much as possible. So, I would agree, I hope a bunch of people show up at these, at these, uh, meetings and, um.
I was talking about committee managers.
I understand.
Okay, but, but it's, you know, as important as one, you know, the kind of word development, and here you're in the ground level, so it makes a lot more sense to inbound out than after someone comes in with a proposal.
Yeah, no, exactly right, and I think it's a, it's a great opportunity, uh, very often, you know, this has happened in other towns, a, a large business will just leave town and then decide that they wanna, wanna make a building and then, you know, you're nowhere. I think that the opportunity that we've taken here, that we've sort of seized, and the chance that we have to, to make something really happen here, uh, I think is, is a great one. And, and if we don't do anything, obviously nothing will happen, or whatever will happen, we have no control over, no say over, so, you know, why not participate in this process? So we think it's a good process. Thank you very much this evening.
Anybody have any comments?